Sky News Centre at 10, MPs say it's becoming increasingly likely that assisted dying could be legalised in a Crown dependency such as the I Love Man. They say the UK government must be prepared for that and be actively involved in a response. Sue Biggerstaff was told by nurses that her husband, who had motor neuron disease, was decomposing while he was still alive.
He'd chosen to starve himself to death if it carried on any longer, but at the point where he got that bad, it was too late. I don't want to see anybody suffer like Simon did.
But campaigners fear some could be pressured into it. The Hamas-run health ministry in Gaza says the number of Palestinians killed by the Israeli military since the 7th of October is now more than 30,000. Access to foreign journalists is limited. Israel accuses Hamas of inflating numbers. The NHS is launching a campaign encouraging parents to get their children vaccinated following a spike in measles infections. The number of youngsters getting their jabs has fallen below 95%, the minimum level recommended by the World Health Organisation. The results of an investigation into Sarah Everard's killer and whether he could have been stopped are being released this morning. A report's examining whether chances were missed to identify previous offending by Wayne Cousins. Illinois has become the third state to remove Donald Trump from the presidential ballot. His campaign teams called it unconstitutional and says he'll appeal. Separately, the Supreme Court is to decide by the end of June whether to allow a federal prosecution of Mr Trump over allegations of election interference. Our US correspondent Mark Stone says that could delay any trial until after this November's presidential vote.
The American people do not get to hear a case against a former president accused of the most serious of crimes, insurrection, until after the point at which they potentially choose him to be their next president.
And a by-election is taking place in Rochdale to decide on a new MP. Polls close at 10 o'clock tonight. That's the latest. I'm Anna Bates.
Park Radio Weather with John Doe of DIS for all your flooring, bed, furniture, lighting and soft furnishing needs since 1983.
Clean my car yesterday, so you can rest assured it's going to rain, and it is to. It's overcast at the moment, we're going to have increasing amounts of rain moving in from the west, becoming heavier at times in the afternoon. Deep joy, and highs of 11 degrees. Tonight, cloud and rain will clear to the east during the evening to leave a dry second half of the night with clear spells leading to the risk of a grass frost. Lows of 1 degree, oh heavens above. Now currently around the Waveny Valley, in Skoll, Tiverton, St Margaret and in Brockford Street as well, we have 10.
Mid-mornings on Park Radio, sponsored by Waterfields. From large roadways and car parks to driveways and patios, we're qualified, experienced and have a personal touch. For a quote, contact DIS 74025.
Welcome to the programme.
Now, Mid Morning with Paul Stephen.
Okay, it's only me, but Mo Umber joins me very soon. Oh, I love that. Six minutes after 10, it's a Thursday morning, it's the 20th of February, and I shan't be saying that for another four years. Mo Umber, leader of Harleson Town Council, well, he is going to be here after the Beatles. The Beatles and Magical Mystery Tour, oh, I do love that. Takes me so far back. Yeah, I know much further than all you lot. It's eight minutes after 10. Good morning, welcome. This is the mid-morning show with him, me, on the programme until 12 then. John O'Woodwood with the afternoon show. And it's my pleasure, once again, to welcome back an old friend of mine from Harleson. He's Mo Umber and he is the leader of Redden Hall and Harleson District Council, Town Council. I just promoted you.
Yeah, thanks very much. Good morning.
Welcome, Mo. It's nice to have you back in the studio again. We've got a few questions for you, actually, and we'll save those till a little later on. But first of all, some good news. I understand that Broadland and South Norfolk Business Awards are being awarded to a couple of the local businesses in Harleson.
Yeah, that is true. I think the Cat Public House is one of them.
Yeah, it's up for South Norfolk Pub of the Year.
Yeah, which is always good to see a pub doing well.
Yeah.
And the other one is, can you...
Yeah, it's Robinsons.
Oh, Robinsons, that's right, yeah, again.
Traditional stations, dear old Kieran there.
Yeah, and it's great to see businesses in Harleson, you know, up for this sort of thing.
Yeah, and he's up for South Norfolk Retailer of the Year, which is pretty good. Well done, Kieran. I understand there's also been a little grant come from South Norfolk Council. Now, it's called Cleanup and Bloom Award. Don't know what that's all about, do you?
Yeah, well, I'm not 100% sure, but I know that it's, it is an award, a grant that we get. I think we're probably putting it towards things like keeping the town clean, or the War Memorial around that area, maybe more flowers and stuff around that area to make things better, and using the money to try and help keep the town cleaner. Although, I will say, the town, I think, is kept quite well by our maintenance staff as it is.
Yeah, it's interesting, though. I was walking down Redden Hall Road the other day towards the roundabout on the A143 there, and honestly, people just drive along there and throw their rubbish out of the windows. It was everywhere, all over Redden Hall Road. I picked up as much as I possibly could and put it in a bin, then contacted Claire Crane, actually, and told her about it. And I now understand that South Norfolk District Council are doing a litter pick, actually, so...
Yeah, I mean, you know, you've done the right thing. You get in touch with us and Claire will report it, and hopefully we try and get things sorted, moving so people clear up the rubbish. But I mean, like you said, if people didn't chug it out in the first place, we wouldn't be in that position.
Yeah, it's actually all from McDonald's in Beckles, would you believe. Most of the stuff comes from there, which begs belief, to be honest with you. But here's a plea from all of us here on Park Radio. Take your rubbish home with you. Don't throw it out of the windows of your car, whatever you do, but we're going to be involved in that South Norfolk litter pick, and we're going to kind of clean up that area anyhow.
Nice, yeah, good.
So that's good news. Now, there's an annual town meeting coming. Are you brave or what?
Well, this is very important, actually. It's a chance for everyone to come together. It's an informal meeting, it's not a grilling as such, but it's more like people of the town, all the groups to tell us what they're up to, we can say what we're up to, and just to come in together and celebrate the things that happened in the last year and the good things that have happened in the town, and the good things like the businesses, how they're getting on, and local events and stuff like that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, people do some, in some way, kind of take exception to the things that maybe you have just said now, and not everybody is happy. I'm sure you know that well.
I agree, I agree.
And I've got a message here saying Mo says the town council has no say on the parking on the marketplace and the supposed demise of our town. I think, I'm not sure I totally agree with that, but if so, where is our voice and what is the point of a town council if we can't have a say in what is happening in our town?
Well, that's a very good point, but I can only reiterate, the regulations are set by highways and part of the town's new roads, if you like. The parking on the marketplace, there isn't any. There's not, you're not allowed to park there, it's as simple as that. Now, all these complaints we have taken on board, we have passed them on to highways and also to the district council.
I think that's exactly what we wanted here, actually, the fact that you will accept, obviously, people's views, but you have to pass them on to the most appropriate people, in this case, highways.
Of course, I mean, we'll take all, anything, but people have to understand, we are a small town council. We do not have control over highways, we don't have control over parking. We can voice our opinions and that's down to highways, but they're not going to change things.
It's interesting, actually, that it's down to highways, and hopefully you can pass this back as well. I actually voiced my concerns on a Facebook page not long ago, a Harleson Facebook page, and actually said that why on earth do we not open the marketplace to parking in the wintertime when it's not being used for leisure operations? And if you look at that marketplace for so long, it's been completely empty. The only thing on it had been benches and that's all. Now, the reason I mention this is because there was a lot of response to that, and the vast majority, if not the majority, were all totally agreeing with that. It's a waste of space in the winter because nobody's going to sit out there, it's too cold, why not use it for parking?
That's, that's fair comment, but again, you know, we can all say this, but at the end of the day, there is no parking order on there. Now, in the summer, we're trying to put events on there to try and track it and try and use it. In the summer, you all pass there, people like sitting out there, they have their lunch out there. Not everybody dislikes it. I appreciate that some of the businesses don't like it, but again, we are powerless. If they've got complaints, I suggest they pass them on to the relevant people, which are Norfolk District Council and also highways.
Yeah, I think that's the really important point, Mo, actually. So, yeah, if anyone's listening, write to highways@norfolkcountycouncil. Now, the other question was, with over 500 houses planned for Harleson, will all the SIL money, and this is money that's given to the town council, is that...
Well, it's given to Norfolk County Council, and they gave it to us, hopefully.
Yeah, will it all be spent here in Harleson, and how on earth are the doctors and the schools going to cope with the influx of more than 1,000 people when they're full now? And I think that is actually a very good question.
That is a brilliant point. I'm glad you brought that up, actually, because I attended a planning meeting, Norfolk County Council, on Monday, myself, Michael Hardy, a fellow councillor, and Carolyn, who advises the planning committee. And we brought all these points up. My big concern is the traffic, because obviously Spurkitts Lane, the traffic there is going to, it's going to go through the roof.
Yeah, for sure.
Because we have now got three big developments going on in Harleson, plus hopefully a supermarket coming. Again, we've asked all these questions. As regards to the traffic, the traffic authorities have done surveys, and they're quite confident that Spurkitts Lane can cope with the traffic. The doctor surgery, we have said, you know, what about the infrastructure? There may be money in the future to help us with that, but there is a shortage of doctors, nurses, as we all know. The school is the same, will the school be able to cope? We get the impression that both these commodities feel that they can.
Well, it's interesting, because I read actually something, again, on social media that came from, I think it was a medical board of some kind, asserting the fact that apparently our infrastructure can cope, but, you know, there's 500 more houses in Harleson being built, and that's potentially at least 1,000 extra people that our infrastructure, doctors, dentists, schools, that kind of thing, is going to have to cope with. Now, they say, oh, it'll be okay, you know, you can cope. I don't think we can, I really don't.
Well, again, as I, we went to this, we have our neighbourhood plan, there are policies in there about traffic, housing, medical, and we've quoted all this to the relevant parties. To be fair, we had a meeting with a lot of them yesterday. There's so much that goes into this that we don't know about, and all we can do as a town council is pass all our concerns on and try and stick up for the town and say, look, we're not happy, if you're going to do it, please do it like this.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's good to hear. In fact, it's good that you come into Park Radio and we have these conversations, Mo, because obviously it's a good way of getting what you're doing out into the public domain as well. Now, we had some damage to the War Memorial, didn't we, in Harleson recently, which I think was, it angered a lot of people, I must say.
Yeah, I mean, that was very, very sad. I think the War Memorial is such an important, integral part of Harleson. It's a lovely area, it's well-kept, and it's well-loved, and to find this damage on that was, was very, very, very disappointing. The police have been informed, I do believe that an arrest has been made, I don't know much more about that. And I'd like to praise our maintenance team who actually acted quickly on that, and they removed the Tommy Soldier, which was damaged, and they've made a fantastic repair, and that's now back in place. And, you know, it does beg a belief that something like the War Memorial could come in to be vandalised, but unfortunately, we live in strange times.
Do you know something? I'm going to say this, and I know it's going to provoke a reaction for sure. I do not get people who say, oh, it's the kids, they have nothing to do in the town. I, when I was young, didn't go around smashing things up. I didn't vandalise things, I didn't destroy a War Memorial, which is so loved by the people of Harleson. I think it's just an excuse, I really do, and I think people should, should stop, I really do.
I think, I think the thing is with Harleson, it's such a fantastic, lovely town. We are quite lucky in some respects, compared with other towns of our size. Yes, we have a little bit of vandalism, and we have this, that and the other, and it's not nice, nobody likes to see it, especially in Harleson. But in the grand scheme of things, we've still got a lovely town, and 90% of people in town love it and do their best to keep it as it is.
Absolutely, I'll absolutely agree with that, there's no problem at all. Mo Umber, you're doing a great job, despite all the kind of negative stuff that goes on around, I think you're doing a great job. You're trying to communicate through the website better than the town council has done before, I know, and I know your heart's in the right place as well.
Well, you know, people don't realise, I mean, all us councillors, we put in a lot of hours this, we, you know, we do it voluntary because we care, and yes, we're there to make decisions, they might not always be the correct ones, but we're doing it for what we think is best for the town, and we do work hard. And yes, we're always open for people to talk, this is why we want to do this, we have our surgeries. So instead of people going on Facebook or whatever to have a go, it's come and see us and tell us.
Yeah, indeed. And how can people find about when and where those surgeries are?
The surgeries, that's all advertised on the website, there's posters in HIP, it's regular monthly meeting.
Can I just add, what's going on in Harleson and Waveny, I have to say, my Facebook page has 40,000 people a month look at that page, 40,000 people look at that page. Can you put on there the details of such things as the council meetings and the, you know, that kind of thing?
Well, I think you're fine, if you do go on our website, there's a link to visit Harleson, which shows all the events. The actual town council is, there's a lot of information on there.
Okay.
But always up to put more stuff on.
Mo Umber, it's great to have you back in the studio again.
Thank you very much.
Brave man he is. You'll be back, I have no doubt. Thank you.
Cheers, thanks.
It's an absolutely no-win situation for the leader of the Harleson Town Council, I know it is, what with all the changes that have taken place there as well, but I will just reiterate the fact that if you have a concern about the marketplace, and it does seem to me the marketplace is the centre of any dissent there might be in Harleson, then write to the Highways Authority. If we all do that en masse, maybe they'll listen to us, eh?
Mid-mornings on Park Radio, sponsored by Waterfields. From large roadways and car parks to driveways and patios, we're qualified, experienced and have a personal touch. For a quote, contact DIS 74025. Drive into DIS Tire Centre on Victoria Road in DIS for car and van tyres and so much more. Need a new battery or an exhaust? Air con servicing or alloy wheel repairs? Diagnostics, repairs or welding, even MOT prep? Visit DIS Tire Centre for them all. Plus, to keep your car looking good, there's Crystal Car Wash too. Quite simply, for all your car and van requirements, visit DIS Tire Centre on Victoria Road DIS. For details, visit DIS Tire Centre on Facebook.
Whether it's big, or perhaps a little smaller, whatever size of budget you have, with Rosedale Funeral Home, our level of care and compassion is constant. So you can be assured that whenever you need us, Rosedale, serving DIS, I, Harleson and the surrounding areas are there for you. For direct cremation, funeral finance, affordable choice, home visits, advice and personal service. To find out more about bereavement support groups and other community projects, visit rosedalefuneralhome.co.uk.
Michelle Denny Recruitment.
We know as an employer, your time is valuable. Recruiting new staff takes time away from running your business. Take the stress out of hiring with Michelle Denny Recruitment. With packages ranging from simple marketing all the way through to a fully customised campaign, you'll be in safe hands. With our brand new offices in DIS, we're perfectly placed to find you the candidates you need.
Call Michelle Denny Recruitment on DIS 779829, or click on michelledennyrecruitment.com.
Across the Waveny Valley.
Park Radio. Me, you chose, I wish it was me, you chose, I wish it was me, you chose, Elvis ain't dead. And you're coming back. And Elvis ain't dead. And you're coming back. Elvis ain't dead. Elvis ain't dead. And Elvis ain't dead. And Elvis ain't dead.
Scouting for girls, and Elvis ain't dead.
Thank you and good night.
Time for coffee.
The Coffee Break, sponsored by CB Accounting. Providing accountancy, tax and bookkeeping support across the Waveny Valley. Helping you to work smarter, not harder. Honest, reliable and local, we are CB Accounting.
And we're going back in time to the year when border battles between India and Pakistan erupted into full-scale war. The Walt Disney World theme park has opened in Florida, and how many of us have been there? And the new stock market index called the NASDAQ was debuted.
The Coffee Break, sponsored by CB Accounting.
We're going back to nineteen seventy-one.
And you're coming back. It's so good, I can hardly stand this never-ending love for you. From now on, that's all I wanna do. From the first time we met, I knew. I'd sing my never-ending song of love for you.
Park Radio's Mid-Morning Coffee Break. The Coffee Break, sponsored by CB Accounting.
And you're oh so hard to resist. But I know I gotta stay away, cause I might fall for you. And I don't wanna be added to your list. So now I say.
Nineteen seventy-one was the year when Margaret Thatcher ended free school milk for children over the ages seven. No problem for me, because I have to say, the milk that was always left out in the sunshine and was warm, put me off milk forever. It's also the year that the Soviet Union launched the first space station, Salute One, into low earth orbit. And the Ibrox disaster was also in nineteen seventy-one. Three of the greatest hits from that year, the Tams, Hey Girl Don't Bother Me, the Mixtures and the Push Bike Song. And before that, of course, it was the New Seekers.
The Coffee Break, sponsored by CB Accounting. Park Radio.
Two cracking songs on Park Radio, started off with James Arthur, his new song Bittersweet Love. Just love that, and that's Inhaler, and it won't always be like this.
Park Radio's Action Line, promoting good causes across the Waveny Valley. If you need support, then we're here to help you.
Okay, we're off to Brockdish, Garbolsham and Palgrave this time round. And in Brockdish, there's gonna be an open day exhibition at the Waveny Heritage Centre, the old school Grove Road in Brockdish. And it's all happening on Easter Monday, the first of April, from ten till three. Also gonna be a barbecue and cakes available, and I hope by then we'll have some decent weather and it won't be a wet barbecue. In Garbolsham, Palgrave Players are gonna be presenting Celtic Nights. And it's an exciting night of singing and dancing with an Irish theme. Taking place on Friday the fifth and Saturday, sixth of April, seven thirty PM at Garbolsham Village Hall. Tickets are already available on Ticket Source, look for Palgrave Players. And in Palgrave, the Palgrave Cinema presents Wonka, a modern remake of one of Roald Dahl's greatest stories. And it's gonna be shown on Saturday, thirteenth of April, seven, for a seven thirty start. And it's all taking place at Palgrave Community Centre. You can book in advance at palgrave.cinema@hotmail.com, or you can even pay on the door. How's that? More What's On's in an hour here on Park, now here's Joan Baines, love this song.
Like my father before me, I'm a working man. And like my brother before me, I took a rebel's stand. Well, he was just eighteen, proud and brave. But a Yankee laid him in his grave. But a Yankee laid him in his grave. I swear by the blood below my feet. You can't raise the cane back up when it's in the field. The night they drove, they slid down. And all the bells were ringing. The night they drove, they slid down. And all the people were singing, they went, na, 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 na. Na, 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 na.
Exactly forty-five years since Simple Minds stormed into the UK top thirty album charts with their debut album. Their longest-standing drummer, Mel Gaynor, has announced the release of a fantastic new solo single, which I'm gonna be playing after 11 o'clock when I talk to Mel Gaynor from Simple Minds.
Drive into Disc Tire Centre on Victoria Road in Disc for car and van tyres and so much more. Need a new battery or an exhaust, air-con servicing or alloy wheel repairs? Diagnostics, repairs or welding, even MOT prep? Visit Disc Tire Centre for them all. Plus, to keep your car looking good, there's Crystal Car Wash too. Quite simply, for all your car and van requirements, visit Disc Tire Centre on Victoria Road, Disc. For details, visit Disc Tire Centre on Facebook.
The winter sale at John Doe has begun, with huge savings across the store. John Doe have been flooring and furnishing homes across East Anglia for over forty years. Explore a stunning range of carpets, beds, sofas, furniture, curtains, and more at our family-run superstore in Disc. And discover our range of flexible finance options, including interest-free credit. Plus, stop for a well-earned break at Angela's Coffee Lounge on our first floor. Visit johndoe.co.uk now. Exclusions and minimum spend applies.
Simons, your local coach and travel specialist, have some fantastic day excursions and holiday breaks to destinations across the UK. Cornwall, Yorkshire, Windsor, and Christmas events too. All of these and many more. To see the value for money choice, pick up your brochure on any Simons Country Link bus, or view and even book online at simons.co.uk. Then sit back and enjoy your journey in style. That's simons.co.uk, or call this 647 300.
Mid-mornings on Park Radio, sponsored by Waterfields. From large roadways and car parks to driveways and patios, we're qualified, experienced, and have a personal touch. For a quote, contact Disc 740 255.
Babe, I'm leaving, I must be on my way. The time is drawing near. My train is going, I see it in your eyes. The love beneath your tears. But I'll be lonely without you. And I'll need your love to see me through. So please believe me, my heart is in your hand. And I'll be missing you. 'Cause you know it's you, babe. Whenever I get weary and I've had enough, feel like giving up. You know it's you, babe. Giving me the courage and the strength I need. Please believe that it's true. Babe, I love you. Feel like giving up. You know it's you, babe. Giving me the courage and the strength I need. Please believe that it's true. Babe, I love you. Babe, I'm leaving, I'll say it once again. You somehow try to smile. I know the feeling, we're trying to forget. If only for a while. 'Cause I'll be lonely without you. And I'll need your love to see me through. So please believe me, my heart is in your hands. 'Cause I'll be missing you. Babe, I love you. Babe, I love you.
105.2 and 107.6 FM in stereo on the radio player app and indeed on your smart speaker, we are a Park Radio. We've got the latest national and international news, it's 11 o'clock coming up after this, from the fun-loving criminals.
On FM, online, and on your smart speaker.
Say, play Park Radio Disc.
This is Park Radio.